Good evening. Good to see everybody here this evening. Thank you for being here. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District order. Letter of record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This time if you please rise for the pledge allegiance and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
At this time, do you please remain standing? Do we have, uh, Priscilla Reeves here?
There she is.
Oh, there she is, alright. Uh, Priscilla is the youth director. Ascension Catholic Church will be offering us an open prayer this evening. Thank you for being here.
You can pull it off there.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help this gracious group of servants to engage in meaningful discussion, allow them to grow closer as a team, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill them with your grace, Lord, as they make decisions that might affect the students, staff, faculty, alumni, and advocates of BISD. Continue to remind us all that what we do, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask for your continued blessing on vulnerable populations of our society during this pandemic and for the protection of all first responders. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Reeves, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Alright, at this time, Mr. Edwards, would you introduce our student speaker for character education trade for April, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I am proud to introduce you all to Cedar Creek Intermediate School's sixth grader Jerome Knopig, who will be joining us via a video recording. And Jerome will speak this evening on the April character trait of self-discipline. Jerome likes to play video games when he's not studying, of course, and his favorite snack is spicy chicken sandwich from Chick-fil-A. So if we could hear from Jerome?
Hi, my name is Jerome Knopig, and I'm sixth grader. Actually, I'm a... Let me tell you about self-discipline. Self-discipline is the ability to control yourself and make yourself work hard or behave in a particular way without needing anyone else to tell you what to do. Here are some examples of how on-campus students can demonstrate self-discipline. Making positive choices, making good grades, do not talk during classes, do not be distracted and distracting. If you are a virtual student, it may be a little harder to stay focused because you have most of the things you like around you, like screens other than Zoom, animals, games, food, and people around you running space. This is how I keep myself disciplined. I finish my work before playing games. My friendly thing to do. Go Eagles!
Alright, this time, Mr. Edwards, we'll move into special recognitions, please.
Thank you. Uh, we will start our special recognitions this evening with a recognition of a BISD police officer, Jesse Deal, for bravery and heroism. Presenting on behalf of, uh, this award is Chief Scott Bunch.
Lord, Mr. Edwards, thank you so much for allowing me to recognize Officer Deal this evening. On the early morning hours of March 6th, it was a Saturday morning about 7:00 a.m., Officer Deal was off-duty. He observed a home on fire on Fire Tower Road. He immediately responded and he found a vehicle in the driveway, and so he assumed somebody was in the house. The house was probably fifty to sixty percent fully engulfed in flames at this time. He made entry in through the front door, and he made it through the hall, and he could hear somebody in the back bedroom calling for help, but because of the flame, the smoke, and debris, he was not able to get to her that way. So he exited the house, and he went back out to the front where he found a window unit, a window, and he removed that window unit. He gained entry into the home, and he found a woman in the back clinging to her canines. He was able to pull them and the canines out, pull her and the canines out safely. And what tops that is, I immediately found out about it early that Saturday morning, and so I reached out to his wife, Chelsea, to see how Jesse was doing. And she said, "Well, he came home smelling like smoke, and so he's in the shower right now." We have, uh, a birthday party that our son Price has to go to. It's his cousin's birthday in Katy, Texas, and we need to be there 9:00 a.m. And so he left that action and simply went to a birthday party with his child. Never once claiming heroic actions or anything else. And so later that day, I got a call from Chief Gil. Chief Gil said, "I'm gonna share a video with you. It's what we observed when we pulled up." He sent me the video, and the house was fully engulfed in flames. He said Jesse had just come out of that front right window, the only thing that hadn't received the flames yet, and pulled that woman to safety. And he said, "I'm gonna tell you right now, if it wasn't for Jesse's quick action, she would have perished not at home that day." And so this evening, I'd like to have the honor and the privilege of recognizing Officer Jesse Deal for life-saving award.
Uh, next on our agenda will be recognizing our Bastrop area livestock show grand champions and reserve champions. Our Director Amanda Brantley, she's our Director of CTE in College and Career and Military Readiness. Ms. Brantley?
Good evening. So we have our livestock show every March. It's, uh, students within the Bastrop ISD, um, area, and it's about half Cedar Creek students, about half PHS students, ranging from third grade all the way up to twelfth grade. Uh, we had a really great show this year. We had thirty-eight students able to sell their animals at the total of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. No student received less than two thousand dollars for their animals, so it was a really great year for those kids. Um, so, our reserve champion, market steer was Courtney Odom from PHS, and while we don't have our students here this evening, we do have some photos for y'all to see. In Market's wines, Cedar Creek High School took both champion and reserve with Casey Morris and Chase Bastian. Market lambs, our grand champion, was Garrett Budds at Cedar Creek High School. Market goats were both Cedar Creek High School students and brothers, Luke and Weston Bauer. Our market broiler grand champion was Kyle Tillman from Bastrop High School, and reserve champion was Christopher Roman from Cedar Creek High School. And our market rabbit champion was Grace Sagaville from Bastrop High School. We also have some youth show, uh, components that are not livestock-based at our, at our show. Um, in that our art show, our grand champion, metal art, was Garrett Dilly from Cedar Creek High School. In ag mechanics, our grand champion was Chase Bastian from Cedar Creek High School, and our reserve champion was a team, Trevor Carlisle, Graham Anderson, and Mason McClanahan from Bastrop High School. New this year, we had a public speaking contest. Our grand champion was Kate Miller from Bastrop High School, and our reserve champion was Kenya Ramos from Cedar Creek High School. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brantley. Next on the agenda, we will be recognizing the Cedar Creek High School Boys Soccer Team. Our presenter will be, uh, our athletic director, Mr. Andy Sexton.
Good evening, Mr. Edwards and school board. It's, uh, a great night to recognize some of our programs this year after a difficult year, COVID mitigations and everything else. We've made it through, close to making it through. We're rewinding things down, but, uh, it's the first time in two years, in almost the fourth year I've been here, that we have two soccer teams make the playoffs this year. So I had our coaches, who aren't here tonight, write a little paragraph about their season, and we'll go Cedar Creek first. Thank you. Alright, so Coach Horton is, Trey Horton is our head boys soccer coach, and this is a paragraph he wrote about their season this year. "The Cedar Creek Boys Soccer Team finished fourth in district and hosted the first home playoff soccer game in Cedar Creek history. In a wild season, they consistently fought against every obstacle and put themselves in position to be successful. We were a young team who evolved and matured throughout the year, and the future is very bright for the program due to their hard work. I am very proud to be their coach." Coach Horton did a great note. Through this COVID and, and, and quarantine, a lot of our programs had to play four games a week for two, three weeks in a row. It's hard enough to play two games in a week, but when teams were quarantined, and several of our teams this year had to play three or four games in a week. So very proud of Coach Horton and the Eagles. Our Lady Bear Soccer Team with Coach Leslie Rangel, again, they had the same problem, had some quarantine issues throughout the course of the season, had to play multiple games in, in, in a, a week. But her paragraph that she wrote, "The Lady Bear Soccer Team finished their season with a thirteen-nine-and-two record, eight-four-and-two in district qualifying for the playoffs. In a crazy year of a pandemic, quarantines across the district forcing a four-game-a-week schedule, this group of girls have pulled together and persevered through it all. Additionally, Senior Addie Taylor was named eighteen-five-A All-District Midfield MVP." So very proud of our two soccer teams, uh, boys and girls from those schools. I know thanks for winding down, but we've got a lot of kids competing this week. We've got track, uh, track, uh, kids from both schools traveling to Upland this weekend to run in the regional track. I just got back from A&M today. We've got some golfers from both schools competing in regional golf, boys and girls this week. And we've got tennis, our doubles team, girls to the double team from Bastrop, is district champs, and they're competing next week with us. So thanks for winding down. We've got a lot of things to, to, uh, be proud of our kids and their, their season so far. But thank you for recognizing young people.
Alright, next on our, um, recognition is, uh, we want to recognize our SSC Maintenance Team for the proactive service during our winter freeze. Ms. Callahan?
Alright, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for having, uh, and joining us to recognize our Bastrop ISD Maintenance, uh, Team. Rusty West and Bill Hanson are here with us tonight. And, um, just to tell them that they started work that thirteenth of February, uh, and the minute it started, and they worked every day, non-stop, until February twenty-second, so that our students would be ready to come back to school, and everything would be ready. Uh, they did everything, of course, fixing many leaks, picking up twenty-five pallets of donated water into the middle of the night, it seems like. So it was an all-hands-on-deck situation between maintenance, grounds, and custodial, and we just wanted to recognize them tonight. And we have a certificate that they can take back and share with their staff. Um, we had a, a little under three hundred thousand dollars worth of damage, which from what I can see around the state, that's a pretty good number. Uh, they were proactive from the beginning, is keeping the heat on so that we would have as, you know, minimal of damage as possible. Uh, we'll receive insurance claims for that money, so, and we're also working with FEMA because they also have a program to maybe reimburse districts for anything that they weren't reimbursed for their insurance. So, uh, if Rusty West and Bill Hanson would come up, we'd like to, to recognize them. And also take the opportunity, uh, to introduce Bill Hanson as Bastrop ISD's new Director of Operations. We're excited to have this position back in the district, and Bill will be working with our Maintenance, Food Service, and Transportation Departments. So we're excited about that. So, welcome up.
And Rusty, I'm sorry, you all did such an outstanding job. We stole, uh, Bill from you, but he's gonna do great work. You all continue your great partnership. Again, Bill Hanson is our new operations person, who will help oversee, uh, maintenance and operations throughout the district. So, welcome aboard, Bill. Alright, next on our recognition, we are very pleased to take some time to recognize, uh, the Bastrop County Cares for their volunteer assistance in this incredible vaccination program that's been going on throughout the county. At this time, I'd ask Dr. Lee to please come up and do the presentation.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to recognize this incredible, uh, organization. Uh, honestly, Bastrop County Cares, under the leadership of Debbie Brissette, does so many things for our community, uh, for, whether it's early childhood, whether it's human trafficking, whether it's workforce housing, whether it's broadband. Uh, there are so many things, really, but most recently, they were the glue that allowed, uh, the vaccination clinics to go forward, um, providing countless volunteer hours, um, at every clinic, um, answering phone calls, manning vaccine clinic stations, serving water, being a support system. And that is a testament to the kind of person that Debbie Brissette is, but it is also a testament to an organization that is critical to the future of Bastrop County. So I'm pleased to recognize Bastrop County Cares for being a champion of people and projects that directly impact the quality of life, health, and safety of the residents of Bastrop County, specifically for extraordinary volunteer efforts to ensure COVID-19 vaccine distribution.
Okay, I'm going a little off-script. I just want to say that we had two thou, over two thousand nine hundred volunteers since January first. Sign up and Bastrop connects, be a community, um, volunteer donor. They did over twelve thousand hours of time, and, uh, the in-kind cost so far for this gift for the, uh, clinics and the people of our community has been over three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This has been an amazing community-building effort. I want to thank you all for the PAC. It's been a wonderful space. The staff at the PAC should get this award too. They were, they just did a wonderful job. They were very welcoming, helped organize and keep our water safe. Who knew water would be such a big thing? So, uh, I just want to thank you all so much for this. This is not about BCC. This is about our community and what it can do. It just needs a little organizing help.
Thank you again, Debbie, for all that you do, so far beyond the vaccines. I think Dr. Lee was exactly right. We're so glad you're here to help get us organized and, and keep us united as we, we move our county forward. So, thank you. Yes. Yep. Alright, and finally, we'd like to take the opportunity to recognize Bastrop County Health Authority, Dr. Desmar Walks, for her leadership and service during this pandemic and the vaccination program. Dr. Lee?
Um, absolutely. If, uh, if Bastrop County Cares, uh, were the, uh, boots on the ground, uh, Dr. Walks was definitely their commander-in-chief, their fearless leader, um, a tireless advocate, really, for this community, the health and safety of this community. Speaking, uh, just specifically about what she did with public schools, um, just our constant guide, giving us wise counsel, being willing to answer question after question after question at all hours of the night, uh, being willing to, to partner with us, um, to make sure that we were keeping our schools safe, um, and not to mention, uh, advocating to ensure that Bastrop was a hub for vaccine distribution, uh, not a claim that many cities in the state of Texas can make. So, we would like to present the BISD Hero Award to Dr. Desmar Walks for advocacy on behalf of public schoolchildren, teachers, and staff, for care of the most vulnerable of our community, and for extraordinary leadership in ensuring comprehensive vaccine delivery to our community. Dr. Desmar Walks.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I want to say that I'm humbled and surprised and grateful to be living in Bastrop County. It's an amazing place to raise a family, and I'm surrounded by amazing leadership, such as the people that sit on the BISD Board and in all places of government in this, in this county. Um, we've been through something historic this past year, and together we've, um, forged our way. Um, people have made their own decisions about masking and, uh, social distancing and vaccinating, and we've maintained the freedom that our country is based upon. But in that same light, we've also, um, worked together to do what we knew needed to be done with masking and social distancing so that we could keep each other safe. And I hope that going forward, we continue with that, um, same perseverance that we can move on to our next phase of normal and reopen, and next year, open our schools in a way that looks more like what we're used to, and, and, uh, continue on to forge ahead as Bastrop County knows how to do. We've been, we've risen, like, before from fires like Phoenix, and we'll do it again after this. So thank you for this award.
Yes, sir.
Alright, at this time, uh, we will move into our open forum. Uh, the board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district rejoins. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so at this time. The board asks that the comments pertain to public education. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issue that are not posted on the agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion of that issue until appropriate time during the meeting. The board has adopted compliance policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable solution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents may be heard in accordance with the policy FNG Legal and FNB Local. We will be taking speakers in order that the... Check. There we go. We're back on. Alright.
It's like it's mine. Turn yours off.
Turn mine off?
Yeah, let's share. Let's see if that works.
There? Hello? Hello? Testing, testing. Says off, but we'll go with it. Alright. Bear with me here, one more paragraph. Uh, we will be taking speakers in the order that are, uh, that requests were received. We allow thirty minutes for open forum. We have seven speakers signed up to speak this evening. Therefore, each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. At this time, we do have microphones on each side of the middle microphone, so feel free to use, uh, whichever one you wish. And as I call your name, please come up, and we will start your, uh, three minutes, and as the timer goes off, uh, your time will be up. So our first speaker here tonight is, uh, Sonya Walczek. Did I say that right, Sonya?
Wasik.
Wasik, I'm sorry about that. It's kinda like muting, cause, uh, alright, thank you.
Dear parents, esteemed school board members, and members of the community, we are all here because we love our children. While love nurtures our children, it does not raise our children. It takes personal sacrifice and education. We have to make sacrifices and evaluate situations in order to act in the best interest of our children. As parents, even when we don't believe there's any real danger, we still check the creepy noise in the middle of the night and look under the bed for that thing we're pretty confident is imaginary, so that our children feel loved, heard, supported, and valued, even though enough for us to take the time out and address these emotional needs. Parents love our children enough to make sacrifices for their well-being of the whole child. This district and its employees care about your children enough to do background checks... This district and its employees care about your children enough to do background checks, require teachers to monitor halls, check bathrooms, stand at morning duty, wipe down desks, require peanut-free zones, and reiterate the mantra, "Keep your hands to yourself." All these things show our students that we're actively taking a role to keep them safe and healthy. None of this is passive. None of this is convenient, but it's what's required to keep our children safe. BISD cares enough about our students to be inconvenienced. I'm not sure that everyone here knows the cold hard fact that we have experienced at least one COVID-related teacher death. In-person teaching in COVID is not without risk. And our teachers and substitutes who are the life's blood of remaining open are in harm's way every day. The least we can do is help protect these people who are helping us keep our doors open. Our community values our children's future enough to ensure they can be educated in person. Failing to protect your child when they're in our care means we're negligent in the most important job on the planet, safeguarding the next generation. We don't let our kids run with scissors. We don't let them ride skateboards on campus. We make them walk in the halls and we keep them from pushing and shoving, all because they may not realize how simple things can be dangerous to others. Do we want to encourage our children to increase the dangerous potential of this disease? We balance freedoms with security and care about our children's well-being enough to discourage them from behaviors that could cause harm to others. We understand our children well enough to protect them from one another and themselves. Not all of our students are in the same place developmentally. Some of them are self-confident and extroverted enough to say what they think and feel and advocate for themselves. But a much larger number of our children are just scared and honestly don't know who's going to protect them or who they can turn to. We are supposed to be those people. In the grand scheme of things, what we already do as parents and educators to protect our children, wearing a mask is nothing to sacrifice for our children. We have to value everyone in our community enough to continue the mask mandate and show our children that we care enough to act.
Our next speaker is Tony Malone.
Wow. Following that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Tony Malone. I am a 22-year educator in Bastrop ISD. I've served this community proudly. But first, just a little bit of history. In 1635, the Boston Latin School was established as the first public school in America. And since then, teachers, educators have selflessly answered the call to educate other people's children. Often, we do this at the sacrifice of our own children and ourselves. When the pandemic hit in March of last year, teachers stepped up and we changed the face of education in this country forever. In August, despite our fears over being sent to work in school buildings with no vaccine and no assurance of our health and safety, we showed up. Again, we did what was asked of us and we did it well. Teachers in BISD have shown up. We've been there for other people's children because we care. We have worked countless hours. We've stretched our own personal dollars to buy materials, supplies, cleaning and safety equipment. And we do this because the young people that we are charged with depend on us to make sure that we are doing everything to keep them safe while they are in our care. In turn, we as employees of Bastrop ISD have entrusted our health and safety to you. We have put the needs of our students first and we ask that you put the needs of your employees first. We are asking that the mask mandate stay in place for the remainder of this school.
Our next speaker will be Amber Miller Linderman?
Amberly.
Ma'am?
Amberly.
Amberly. I'm sorry, Miller.
Okay. Good evening. Today I come to you on behalf of 150 teachers in Bastrop Federation of Teachers. I am Amberly Miller Linderman and I am president of the Bastrop Federation of Teachers. Today, we ask that we keep this mask mandate in place, at least until the end of our current school year. We have 26 and a half school days left. Not that I'm counting. Which equates to just about six weeks left of school. We have made it seven months so far. What's one more going to hurt? The BFT teachers want to feel safe at work. We are still having positive COVID cases across our campuses in BISD. There are still so many unknowns with regards to COVID, the variants and the vaccines. We, the members of the Bastrop Federation of Teachers, urge you to continue to allow us to do our jobs in the safest environment possible. As the sign says, masks are disposable. Students, teachers and staff are not. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Nikki Summers.
Hello, Walk. I do very much appreciate letting you guys, or letting me come up here to speak with you guys. What I really wanted to focus on tonight is this mask mandate. Chris, nice seeing you again. Don't remember who I am. Anyway. I've been fighting cancer since August of 2019. So the medications leave me a little challenged at times. So please forgive me because I kind of ramble a little bit. But I'll try to keep it concise and short. I was a member of the 96th Military Force of the 27th. Last kick due to that, I spent in hazmat. So I kind of know that realm pretty well. Whenever this COVID hit, I could see how much it really scared everyone. Given my background, my training, all that come together, you know, a lot of things made sense to me, a lot of things did not make sense to me. I would ask, are we, are we under right now in emergency declarations? Well, sorry. The, the thing that I want to bring that up is, is that if we're not under an emergency declarations, then regulations which govern workplaces absolutely have to be enforced. And the one that comes to mind with me is since Texas is a right work state, it's a 29 CFR ocean. They have very specific themes about how to operate in what is known as the hot zone. And you couple that with 40 CFR, 29 CFR in 1910, 120, which is known as Hazwhopper. I can tell you this. These do not protect you. I'm not saying that they don't do some good, but I'm telling you folks, living in the world that I live in, those do not need to die. Without an emergency declaration, we have to go by precedents in the past, which is 29 CFR, 40 CFR and 49 CFR, which governs the transportation of our children. Unless we're going to protect our teachers, and I absolutely agree with everything that you guys said about protecting yourselves. But according to the regulatory environment that we're in now, none of those guys need that because to be in a hot zone, you have to wear levels A to level D. If you guys want to write this down, that's fine. You can prospect me, please do that. But without being in that hot zone and operating in that hot zone, is the district prepared for the expenditures of meeting those regulatory environments? Which are, I can describe them to you level A to level D, but it goes from basically a respirator with carbon active filters all the way up to a SCA with totally capsulating suits of level A. My children all come up through this system in the nineties. The mud hurt, pulled me away for about eight years. When I come back here, this was not the same school system that my children went through. The improvements have been fast. This lady here, I've spoken with her. Every person I have spoken to within this district has always been professional, has always been very attentive and has always taken into account. Is my time up?
All right. Our next speaker is Megan Voight.
What has happened to the focus of education, nutrition and education in our districts? What has happened to offering our students with learning disabilities the best learning environment possible? In the past, our district has done so well in offering services for all students. They have done so well at meeting the needs of every individual student. Now we find ourselves not meeting any of those needs. We are now focused on a virus that has a 98% survival rate. How are we addressing the needs of children who have now become depressed or now have severe anxiety because they are being forced to place a mask over their faces while at school? What is the district doing to address the long-term effects they are causing on students socially, physically, psychologically and emotionally? Is there a long-term plan in effect to address these issues that you are causing? Depression in our youth is on the rise this year. As you know, this is not my first time speaking out about my concerns over the effectiveness of masks that are having on our children and I'm sure this won't be the last. I have reached out to the district trying to come up with a compromise that could work for both students and teachers. Currently, there is no compromise. All I hear from the district is their fear of what their teachers will do if the mask policy is changed. I think the district has lost its focus. Our sole focus should be on the students, not the teachers. If it's not, then you as our leaders need to rethink the position you hold and why you hold those positions. Our students, my children, should be your priority and it's not. BISD has dropped the ball this year on providing the best learning environment possible for its students, my children. Letting your teachers bully you is wrong and a disservice to your students. Teachers constantly harass students throughout the day if a mask falls below their nose. Students are now fearful of teachers. Those we entrust our children with are creating fear and anxiety in our children. The teachers have become the bullies. This needs to stop today. Every day, there are districts who are changing or removing their mask policies. There are large districts such as Tomball ISD with 16,000 students, Magnolia with over 13,000, Hallettsville with over 9,000, Friendship with almost 10,000, Comout with 24,000, Amarillo with 32,000, Canyon with 10,000, the largest of them all out of Houston, Sci Fair with 116,000 students. They have put their students first. The Katy School District recently took the same stance as you're taking and refusing to change their policy. Their parents hired an attorney to represent them so that they could have the option to choose what's best for their students. As of Friday, Katy ISD with 79,000 students changed their policy to do what's best for their students. I would, I would hate for BISD to find themselves in a costly political battle and be the center of media attention because they refuse to put their students first. So I am asking you as a parent. Do what? I'm asking you first to put my children first. For Jordan, Jackson and Clinton, allow them to unmask.
All right. Our next speaker is Jordan Dyer. Jordan, who's your guest you have with you?
My best friend.
Awesome. Thank you all for coming up.
Hi. My name is Jordan Dyer and I'm in eighth grade. And, sorry, I'm nervous. I'm at middle, the BISD Middle School here in Bastrop. I wanted you to know how masks make, make me feel.
You guys are around.
Sorry, I'm really nervous. I'm dyslexic, so this might take me a second. I'm sorry. Masks and running really hurts the brain. It does and y'all don't care. My mom personally has tried to talk to y'all and y'all don't care. Y'all don't. And me as a student having to come up here and talk to y'all, that is bad for y'all. Really bad on y'all part. Masks have made my friends feel like they're quieted and can't be heard. All students have a voice and all kids need that. Because whenever they grow and get where y'all are today, they're not going to know how to stand up for themselves. And you said, or heard, every student should stand up for themselves and you know that is correct. I can't see my students' face expressions and see their smiles. I also can barely hear my teachers. And me as a dyslexic student needs to hear that. We need to because we will not learn. And it is hard enough to read as it is. And it hurts. My two brothers over here, sending Clint. Clint especially has asthma and this mess is making it worse for him and it scares me every day to see him walk out that door. And I'm sorry that I'm crying, but listen, y'all, I'm not doing anything to help us. You are. I hope that what I'm saying today won't make y'all change your minds because there are multiple friends of mine that they're asthma and breathing issues and stuff has gotten worse. Worse, they've had to change out of athletics to just stop running because they couldn't breathe. I've had to lose friends and we've had to lose people to play sports and that is bad on y'all's part because you want kids to play sports. Because I know you had three or four people come up here and speak about soccer and sports. Is that correct? And I personally need to hear people, to see people because we have, as kids, a dyslexic, she is dyslexic, my two younger brothers are dyslexic. They need to see people's face expressions to learn. And I hope that changes y'all's minds tonight because this is very bad for your part if I'm coming up here and talking to y'all. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Charlene Ferris.
Bear with me. One, I absolutely hate seeing a child cry. That is the biggest bully ever. Children should not cry because of going to school. It should be a place of learning and of love and of putting children first. I understand- I understand putting teachers at risk. Teachers have options. Students don't. That's not okay. So, a little bit ago, I'm sitting in the crowd, and what do I see? Photo op. Y'all are standing extremely close to each other. No mask. No mask. If you can do it, our children can do it. Our children can do it. If the teacher is worried, they can stay six feet away from the child. They don't need to go near that child if the teacher is worried. The statistics show that the children are not passing it to the teachers. They are getting it elsewhere and bringing it to school. I am thankful that my daughter got really smart last year and decided to graduate a year early. Because I guarantee you, if I would have been a parent this year at B I S D, you would not like me. As it is, I have many nieces, nephews, sister-in-laws, brother-in-laws working for B I S D. And I am here vocalizing for them. I have teachers who have come to me and said, "We cannot focus on our children in these masks." They can't focus. Why, how is that putting our children first? It's not. Kids aren't learning. Kids can't think with the mask on. Kids under 10 shouldn't have it on according to CDC rules and guidelines. That's on the CDC website. And y'all are forcing our kids to wear masks under the age of 10. So, the other point I have is all these people have come up here and spoke at this microphone. When I go sing karaoke at the bars downtown that are open, open, no mask. The county buildings, open, no mask. Everywhere is open and packed, and the numbers are going down. But what I see here is this microphone right here has been spin on, has been touched. Nobody has come up and sanitized it. No one has come up and sanitized it. So, my point is, if y'all can unmask, if y'all can unmask for a photo op, our kids can unmask.
We want to thank everybody who came out to speak before the board. We appreciate your support tonight, as well as all the teachers and staff we've heard from all over the district. The board understands this is an important topic, and it may be a hot, and it is a hot button issue. We also know that there's an overwhelming majority of our teachers and staff want us to keep the course for the rest of the school year. We just have a few weeks left. But the board does consider all the input, and again, we appreciate all of you coming out tonight. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll move into our superintendent's report. And, uh, this time, uh, we have a financial report for delinquent tax report. Presenter, Noe Race.
Mr. Race, uh, we're gonna see if you can follow that, so.
Mine's gonna be a boring presentation, but it'll be quick. Thank you for having me, Mr. President and Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. It's always good to see you. This will just take a few minutes, but I wanted to provide this year's uh, report on tax collections, uh, and revenues to the school district. We've been working very diligently during this COVID year, of course, uh, and, uh, at least so far, uh, we've seen collections remain fairly, fairly good, uh, stable. And, uh, one thing that the board has not had to worry about during this time has been our revenues. Uh, and, and as a community, we're, um, we're very fortunate to be able to say that. If at any point during today's presentation, you have any questions about any of these figures, I'll be glad to answer them. Uh, I'm going to present to you, uh, four charts that demonstrate, uh, various collections categories. Although the presentation that I provided to you has, uh, quite a bit more of information, but, uh, the, these four basic, uh, figures, I think, tell the entire story. So, uh, I'll go ahead and start. If we go to, uh, on your presentations on page three, it is, uh, uh, a chart called Total Revenue from Tax Collections. This, uh, revenue represents, your cash flow during the fiscal year. It's fiscal year collections. It is current tax year collections plus all delinquent tax collections plus penalties and interest during the fiscal year. Obviously, we're still collecting 2020 taxes. That fiscal year does not end until, uh, June of 2021. So, uh, our report goes through tax year 2019. If you look, uh, at 2019, fiscal year ending 6/30/2020, the adjusted tax levy was $58,827,000. Total current and delinquent tax collections were $57,361,676. Penalties and interest collected on delinquent taxes were 801,522. Total revenue from tax collections during the fiscal year was $58,163,198. The percentage collected was 100.14%. Uh, of this 100.14%, 95.9 percentage points were 2019 tax year collections paid prior to July 1st. Tax bills come out in October, November. Penalties begin to accrue in February. July 1st, that year's taxes that have not been paid are then turned over to us for collections. 95.9 points of that 100.14% was taxpayers, taxpayers that paid prior to July 1st. Uh, the remaining amount is delinquent tax collections for all years plus penalties and interest. So roughly about 96% paid prior to July 1st, and then the remaining amount is paid, is collected by our law firm, about five percentage points. As you can see the history, uh, I, I'd like to see this number in this particular, uh, district to be above 98%, but each year we've had, uh, well above that goal. I believe T E A's first ratings require this to be at least 96%. Uh, so we're well, uh, above those requirements. Are there any questions about this particular figure? All right, I'll move on to the next one, which is on page four. These are cumulative tax collections. These are, uh, each tax year levy collected over time. This one's pretty, pretty easy to read. The longer a tax year is collected, the more of it we collect. We have payment plans, we have deferrals, we have lawsuits, uh, collecting these taxes that, as you can see, over time, we achieve almost 100%. So, uh, it really doesn't get any higher than that. We began 2000, of the 2019 tax levy, uh, tax, tax year, which bills came out in Oc- October, November of 2019. Uh, since then, as of February 28, 2021, 97.92% of that has been collected. And over time, of course, you see an increase, and that's what, that's what we want to see. Is there any question about this particular chart? All right, I will go to the next one. Uh, this is, uh, chart number three on page five of your presentations. This is purely the work, uh, that my firm does. For 2000 tax, tax year 2019, what was not paid by July 1st of 2020 was $2.379 million. As of February 28, 2021, 1.210 million has, remains unpaid. We've collected 1.169 million for a percentage of 49.14 in eight months of collection activity. I, I shoot for this number to be, uh, 50 to 60% within the first 12 months. That's, uh, that's our, that's our goal. Here, we achieve that, basically, the 50% within eight months. So we're a bit ahead of the game on that one. Over time, as you can see, again, each tax year's delinquency, 2016, 2.2, 2.2 million, one delinquent. All that has not been paid of that has, is $200,000. Most of this is probably going to be in deferrals, over 65s, disabled persons, and of course, uh, payment plans and litigation. In 44 months, 90.92% of that 2.2 million has been collected. Again, very, very, very strong figures. Are there any questions about this? All right, the last one is everything that's outstanding, uh, uncollected in Bastrop I S D, and we are on page nine of 15. We're having a little, I, I don't know what happened with, uh, with the PowerPoint there. Yeah. I'll just read out these numbers. Uh, it's a pretty simple chart as well. For 2019 and all prior tax years, the unpaid amount of taxes is $3.8 million. Now that goes back further than 20 years. Why? Because there is something called a tax deferral that exists. When an individual is over 65 or disabled, on that individual's residence homestead, he or she may apply for a tax deferral, a tax postponement, uh, a tax payment postponement, uh, into the future when that property ceases to be the individual's residence homestead. Once a property is in, uh, homestead sta- uh, deferral status, no collection activities can be undertaken. Out of those, $3.7 million of the total taxes outstanding, about $1 million, as you can see on your chart, 900, 909,000 is in tax deferrals. So of that 3.7, that first 900,000 is uncollected. There's also some minor categories like bankruptcy, insolvent personal property, uh, and appraisal district litigation that accounts for about 5% of that 3.79, I'm sorry, 3.7 million, uh, which is roughly about $200,000. There's about $1.3 million of that 3.7, uh, in, uh, in suits, in lawsuits to collect those delinquent taxes. So we're doing, uh, uh, we are, uh, trying to collect those. There is about half a million of that 3.7 in pre-litigation payout agreements. We always try to provide folks the opportunity to pay, uh, according to, uh, a payout agreement. And then there's a small remaining amount that is mostly 2019, which we received in July of 2020, that is still outstanding, about 460,000. So, uh, as you can see, we're working, but hasn't been collected. And, uh, the, the collections remain very, very hot. So, um, much credit to give to the, to the community. Are there any questions about it?
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. In the past, we talked about exemptions. Um, not, um, not, um, 65 and older necessarily, but like ag exemptions, that sort of thing. And, um, I know the numbers continue to go up in the past. Is that still a trend now? Yeah.
I, I, it's, I'm not sure. I think, um, I, as more and more land gets developed in Bastrop County, I think we'll see, um, ag exempt property decrease. Um, I, I don't know where it stands today as far as, is it more, more this year than five years ago? My guess would be it's probably decreasing a little bit every year, just because of the amount of development. The faster it develops, the, you're seeing large squats of land being developed into residence homesteads. You know, most of those received ag exemptions in the past because they were used for hay or, uh, or cattle, or pecans, uh, something like that. I think at least we'll begin to see less and less ag property in Bastrop County.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, Mr. Race, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, this time we'll go to our budget update. Ms. Callahan.
Good evening. We're here to give a little update on the budget. Um, as you know, we're, legislature's still in session and, uh, still working. So, a lot of similar information to last month. I have a few things to, to add. I always just like to show our priority goals every year is that we look at that as we develop our budget. Of course, uh, safety and security and discipline, academic achievement, facilities improvements, and of course, our relationships and broad-based support. Just to look at the budget calendar, we're here, uh, today bringing some preliminary budget, uh, information. Not as preliminary as we bring in a non-legislative year because we're still waiting for, uh, information on, uh, where we might see legislation change or, um, I think honestly, I think we're gonna stream pretty steady unless something, you know, drastically changes. Uh, we were, uh, House Bill 3 gave us a, was a great, um, boost to, to districts last year, and so we'll just hope that continues. We did receive our preliminary values last week, uh, for the, for the budget, so I have those numbers incorporated in the presentation. And just as, you know, to note that in September, we'll adopt the budget. So we're just, uh, July, we'll receive our certified values. Showed this number last year, or last month. Uh, when we budgeted the 2021 budget, we budgeted for an enrollment of 11,720, and, uh, our actual P E M's as-of-date number was 11,405. As you've probably heard a lot about the Hold Harmless provision that districts are receiving because of the pandemic and, uh, you know, ADA being, average daily attendance being lo- lower than we anticipated, we actually budgeted for, uh, average daily attendance of 10,537. Right now, our Hold Harmless number is 10,727, and that's based on, uh, the first two, six weeks and how many students. It'll be based on, really, what'll happen is the last six weeks will determine a, a good portion of how that Hold Harmless will fare. Right now, our template shows that that will be the number we'll use, but I know T E A's working on, uh, making sure that districts aren't penalized by this Hold Harmless, uh, and working with special programs. Sometimes they'll look at each six weeks to see, uh, what your ADA was. And so if, if you can, if your special ed or your state comp ed is more favorable, uh, without the Hold Harmless, then it, then they'll be, uh, adjusting for that as well. So they're still working through that, and, uh, that's good news for districts. Budget assumptions, same, uh, showed this last month. 11,690 is what we're estimating for enrollment. Again, our demographer is estimating 11,895. Uh, we do believe the growth is coming. I have an average daily attendance of 10,834, and that's a 2% uh, from what I've, uh, from what, from this year. And then our weighted average daily attendance, which encompasses all our programs, is 15,276. Budget considerations, and we've worked on, uh, enrollment projections and worked, um, I know we worked this week- Uh, budget considerations, and we've worked on, um, enrollment projections and worked, um, I know we worked this week again in, uh, seeing where our numbers are, seeing what we'll need, where the, where we'll need staff possibly, or where we can move staff around, but keeping that twenty-two to one, of course, for pre-K through four, which is required, and a twenty-five to one for our five through twelve campuses. Um, other bu- budget considerations will be a salary increase and employer insurance contribution increase, depending on what our premiums end up being. It's important for the, everyone to be able to have a, uh, a plan, uh, for the employee on their insurance. Uh, positions for growth, and again, we'll continue to look at that, uh, safety and security, and then immediate, uh, facility improvements, which we look at every year as well. Uh, legislative considerations, uh, working with our legislative, uh, s- staff at TASBO, we get lots of information from them. They think it's important for districts to talk about the federal stimulus dollars, the S R money, we call it. Uh, as you know, that we received the S R one, 1.5 million for this 2021 year, uh, but T E A ended up supplanting all of that money. So, we did receive the grant, but then our state aid was reduced by that amount. So, we really netted, uh, zero dollars on that. But just to show the estimates for S R two and three, uh, S R two for, and this is for Bastrop ISD, is estimated to be 6.5 million, and S R three, 14.7 million. Now, we don't know exactly what T E A will do. They certainly have the opportunity to supplant some of that money, uh, so we'll just have to see how that flows. Um, there are some expenditure requirements for those, and I have those listed. You know, of so, of course, it's about addressing learning loss, uh, getting schools back open, and the testing, uh, just all the projects that, for air quality for, in schools. Uh, S R three addresses social, emotional, and ap- academic needs for students, and I think that's important to note, and, and also to address the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on underrepresented student groups. So, there'll be more to come on that. We'll learn a lot more as we go, and so, just to know that that's, that's out there. Uh, another legislative, um, consideration that they think is important to keep an eye on is that T E A is looking at school districts' annual, um, their fund balances. And of course, you, we know fund balance is a first-rating indicator, and so, districts that have a fund balance in excess, in excess of a hundred and ten days of operating expenditures, uh, they're considering that they will, uh, mandate that, that districts spend, pay that debt down. Uh, I mean, pay, have, spin that down by either paying debt, like our bond payments down, lower our M and O tax rate, uh, further employee compensation above what they get, or deferred maintenance. That's out there. Um, it's, it's kind of sitting there now, so we'll, we don't know what'll happen with that, but that is something to keep an eye on. Uh, my little chart kind of is off the side, but, uh, this, this chart's no different than last month, just showing a, a historical view of our enrollment and attendance and how that trends. And then, uh, this, uh, freeze taxable and total taxable chart does encompass our preliminary, uh, certified values that we received. Uh, there will be protests, of course, we know filed, so that number, uh, we will expect to go down. Um, but our preliminary tax information that I presented last, last month, I anticipated a 10% growth on property values. I'm gonna keep that for now until we, uh, get closer to, to tax time. But, um, as it is with the 10% gross, growth, we would see an M and O tax rate of eighty-seven point eight seven four seven. Of course, our I N S tax rate at forty cents for a total tax rate of a dollar twenty-seven, uh, five seven. They have to be four, uh, decimals now, which is about a four and a half, uh, s- uh, cent decrease in our total tax rate. And so, just kind of how that allocates, how the tax rate is allocated, of course, you know, T E A sets districts' tax rates now, once, uh, values are, uh, reported to T E A. So, um, again, this just shows that our compressed rate, based on a 10% increase, would be point eight two four seven, and of course, uh, Bastrop ISD has the five golden pennies and so forth. Uh, you can also see that the state maximum and it, minimum compressed rates are, uh, at the high end, ninety-one sixty-four and point eight two four seven. So, depending on our values, we would be at the bottom of that. I mean, we'd be at the lowest rate. Uh, and just preliminary, uh, revenue estimates, uh, what I've based that on as far as for state revenue is a 2% increase in our, um, ADA, and then, of course, uh, property value collections based on that 10% increase in property values growth, which would give us, uh, that slide actually. I, I updated that, and I know I'm on the Google Drive, so I'm not sure why that didn't update, but then, but that should, that bottom number is just an estimate. It should be about a hundred and nine million, and so, um, a little more than we anticipated. But again, when we bring the budget in May, we'll have a fair, you know, that'll be a great estimate as to what we will be adopting in June. So, uh, barring no changes, um, that is my presentation for that. I just know that we continue to calculate our budget scenarios, um, looking for our certified values in July so we can set the tax rate, and then we'll be following up with principals and departments on their staffing. Uh, we have increased package, uh, information out to them now so they can let us know what they need. Uh, we always wanna know and, uh, what the campuses need so we can prior, prioritize those based on our goals. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do you know how to, um, account for growth when we're, when, when the campuses ask for, say, we need this many teachers? How do we account for growth in that also?
Well, we actually work, uh, uh, Penae and I work with the principals, and she works with the principals closely, uh, looking at how many staff they have now, uh, how many staff, uh, we project they will have next year as students move up through the system, fourth graders through the fifth grade, and just, we work, uh, they have a great process in place and work with the principals. So, we'll have growth positions, uh, into the budget, uh, budgeted in, so, uh, knowing that we will probably have some growth. And so, we're, we have a conservative number now we're using for growth positions, but we're ju- we're gonna continue to look at those numbers and we'll just have our, uh, pre-K kickstart and K kindergarten kickstart, so it's always good information that we'll get as far as how many students come to enroll, so that gives us a good idea, because sometimes it's hard to estimate how many pre-K and kindergarten students will come, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. You, you said, you talked about the ratios, and how it, how are those determined? Is it T E A that has a?
On the, on the elementary, it's twenty-two to one. Uh, the district actually has a, a priority goal that it stay twenty-five and under, and so, that's what we try to stay, uh, within.
So, it's a district?
Yes.
But then, but the, uh, difference between pre-K and four?
That is mandated, but twenty-two to one.
Twenty-two is, um, what, uh, as well?
Yes, for twenty-two to one.
Okay.
So, that is mandated.
Okay.
With our projected growth rates, and I know several of our campuses are already over capacity, what are we doing to, to try to add that additional capacity at this point to, to make room for all these students?
Um, this year so far, uh, we haven't had to talk about adding any more portables at this point. Um, but certainly that is an option. Um, uh, just, I think right now, we feel like we're in a good place. Uh, but again, depending on the growth, we can always look at hopefully not having to add portables, but, uh, I know, uh, there's campuses that we could actually move portables around possibly, uh, so that, that would always be an option as well.
Do you have a question from the board?
Question about the fund balance, we, the, and, and then just because I, my, I forgot, but how, where are we on our fund balance right now?
Yes, I meant, and I meant to say that, uh, we're at sixty-eight days of operating.
Okay.
And for the first rating, ninety gives you your max points, so we're, we're dreaming up.
So, we need at least ninety, but no more than that, and a quarter.
That's right.
Okay.
Uh, that first rating indicator, though, is not at all, and I mean, so you get points. Uh, and so, the district is, is sixty-eight days is, is fine, but we certainly wanna keep it. And, and, you know, when expenditures rise, though, your fund balance, even if it grows a little, uh, the number of days isn't, uh, doesn't, is, is not affected because your expenditures are higher.
Okay.
Sometimes you, you put money in fund balance, but you don't have a higher percentage of days cash on hand.
Okay. Thank you.
Need a microphone for Dr. Res, please?
Oh, there it is. Thank you. Um, so when we lower the tax rate, it's the M and O side, not the debt service. That number, the debt service number has stayed the same this entire time. Is, so it's not a percentage overall? That number, that forty cents, I think?
No.
What is that number?
It's, it's just based on your, um, values and your, uh, debt service obligations and payment, and early payments the district makes.
But this, but this time around, dropping it seven cents or whatever, we're, we're taking it out of both the M and O and the debt? Or just?
No, that would just be the, the M and O.
Just M and O. Thank you.
Ms. Callahan, thank you very much for being here. Thanks for what you do. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move along here to, uh, curriculum report. There's no report for this month. Uh, and as in regards to the administration, uh, administrative services, human resource report, and the operations department report, and safety, security, and police report, those are all for information only in your board book, which leads us to communication and community, uh, relations, uh, report. Dr. Lee?
Well, I'd like us to end on a great note for this board meeting. I wanted to just recap, um, briefly, um, our experience with COVID and, uh, how we've done. So, you've probably seen this chart. This comes right off of our COVID-19 dashboard. Uh, basically, this shows, uh, a bar chart of how our COVID cases have impacted the district. We have had 528 cases total throughout B I S D since, uh, the start of school. And as you can see, that January timeframe, uh, was, was really the most significant spike that we experienced. If we look at our campuses, so, uh, broken those down for you by elementary, intermediate, middle, and high school, and then down there at the bottom are, are the non-campus-related cases. Um, I have not broken this down, uh, for an onsite student versus an online student and staff, but those are definitely available if you're interested in me sharing that information with you. But what I want you to know, that even though we've had 528 cases throughout the district, um, we've also had some other things happening, like excelling in sports. We heard some of it tonight with both, uh, of our high schools sending teams into the playoffs. We have track qualifiers about to advance to the next round. We have tennis district championships. We are, uh, headed to state in two different teams for Bastrop FFA, um, in wildlife management and in, thank you, (laugh) in horse judging. We are shining in fine arts with bands and choirs earning sweepstakes, with our eaglets, um, earning grand champion, with our B H S, uh, dance team earning, um, record awards as well. And our N J R O T C, we were so happy to be able to send them, even in the midst of COVID, even though they're wearing masks, to send them on their capstone instructional experience to Corpus Christi, which is so integral to giving them that feeling of what it would be like to be a sailor. We are achieving in academics, award-winning, um, regional Austin Science Fair winners, um, our Summit K-12 award winners. And we have programs back in our schools, like, we believe in B I S D, being able to make on-campus visits to reward our staff and say thank you for doing such a good job. And we just started back with Lex and our Roving Chef program, and the kids were very excited about that. So, uh, and you may have seen this as well, Bastrop Intermediate School being awarded by H E B, a school of excellence. They got treated by the Texas Loves Teachers Tour Bus, uh, just last week. So, um, that's not it. There's more to look forward to, board, that I want you to be excited about in Bastrop ISD. We're gonna have prom. We just did this past Saturday for Bastrop. Cedar Creeks will come up next month. Elementary schools are planning Field Day. Their senior trip, Hoop Stars is having its season for the first time in a year. We will have graduation, four graduations at Memorial Stadium with no capacity for family and friends. They'll all be able to come. College signing days, wh- that signal a student's next step when they leave Bastrop High School. Thursday, as Sandra told you, is pre-K and Kinder Kickstart Day, where we will register and welcome new four- and five-year-olds to B I S D. Next month, we will have a retirement ceremony to honor lifelong educators who are leaving, um, Bastrop ISD and the profession. Stars Summer Camp, which will feel more normal this year, and we are increasing our backpacks to two thousand for Stuff the Bus, which will be in July. And of course, we are holding a historic bond election. So, there is much to be proud of, there is much to celebrate, there is much to feel positive about as we are on the path to being a destination District of Excellence. So, give yourselves a round of applause, everyone.
Any questions for Dr. Lee? Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. All right, this time we will, uh, move along to our consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, uh, trustee McClure, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. This will move us into our action items. Our, our first one here, uh, is to consider approval for food service management company contract, number B eight zero six dash two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Edwards?
Uh, Mr. Meeshnake, uh, President Meeshnake, members of the board, we will be pulling this item from the agenda this evening due to the fact that we're still awaiting approval from the Texas Department of Agriculture on our bid submittal. So, uh, we will bring it back as soon as we receive approval.
Is that approval something that's done every year?
Uh, it's actually, they're doing it a little bit differently. We had to go out for requests for proposals, if you'll remember, and so, we're in the final process of it, but they have to approve it before you all can approve it.
Okay.
It may necessitate a special board meeting here in the near future, um, and I will keep you posted.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, that moves us along to consider approval of memorandum of understanding with Centex Family Services Head Start. Dr. Oliveris?
Well, good evening. Good thing I brought my cheat sheet, 'cause I can't write that.[1644.12][1644.15](laughing) All right, uh, good evening, board. Mr. Edwards, thank you so much for, um, having us here tonight. Um, we bring you for your consideration, um, an M O U with Centex Family Services, otherwise known as Head Start, uh, to provide a co-teaching partnership at Emile Elementary School. This partnership would allow us to offer full-day pre-K at Emile and would also then round out all six of our elementary campuses, offering full-day pre-K programming for the 2021, 2022 school year. So, a couple of things that I wanted to, uh, just point out to you for this M O U that you're considering approval tonight, uh, Centex Family Services will provide the physical space at Emile. So, they're, they have a portable that they house there, and they're gonna open up that space. Uh, the Head Start pre-K, uh, class will have two credential teachers, one from, um, Head Start, and then one from B I S D, and they will serve twenty eligible, uh, pre-K students. Uh, both the Head Start, um, teacher and the B I S D pre-K teacher are going to receive training services in both Head Start programming and curriculum and B I S D curriculum as well. So, it's gonna be a great partnership. And then also, Centex was, uh, very generous in offering a stipend for our B I S D pre-K teacher so that they can also participate in all of their required family engagement activities. So, it's a, uh, very well-done, uh, M O U. We value the partnership with Centex Family Services and Head Start. Uh, I'm happy to entertain questions that you might have about this M O U at this time.
I would like to say, um, this is very exciting because we had a, we had a, uh, uh, challenge because there wasn't enough space at Emile, and it, it was, it took a very creative group of people to collaborate and talk between Head Start, and then to, to be joining a, a partnership like this gives us a lot of possibilities for the future as well.
It does, um, yes. So, Christina Keeney, uh, is the executive director, uh, over there, and then also Maria Cisneros, we work very closely with, she is our education director. So, we're very, um, happy and look forward to this continued partnership.
Yes, well, thank you. Yes. Well, thank you for all the work that everyone has been doing to make this happen.
Yes, we're excited. So, if there are no further questions, I recommend the board approve the memorandum of understanding with Centex Family Services as presented.
I move that to approve the memorandum of understanding with Centex Family Services Head Start as presented.
We have a motion, trustee McClure.
Second.
Second by trustee Secats. Your brother discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I know there's no vote yet. Consider approval of an inter-local cooperation contract between Bassdrop ISD and the University of Texas Austin Meadows Center. Dr. Oliveris.
Yes. So, once again, we bring to you for consideration a contract, this time to obtain the services of the University of Texas Austin Meadows Center. Their assessment team would deploy, assess, and gather literacy information for our kindergarten students and our first grade students. And they would do this before the end of the school year. Through this assessment process, they will help us identify students who would benefit most from an individualized reading program. This program then would be carried out via our summer school program. And if the students are not coming to summer school, we would deploy them home with a laptop and a hotspot, and they would be able to access Amplify Learning, which is a self-paced program that would then identify where they are in reading and prescribe an individual program for them to practice literacy at home. So, we want to offer to our, you know, most needed students in kinder and first grade in those early literacy grades, this opportunity to participate in our Amplify Literacy Program. This assessment team would help conduct those literacy assessments for us. Moreover, it would give us baseline data so that we can go early into next year knowing what our intervention programs are going to be. That way, we can start from like the first week of school with those students that are identified for support services. I'm happy to answer any questions about this contract.
Any questions for Dr. Oliveris?
I just wanted to say how excited I am about this. I really feel like this is gonna be a great help to the teachers, to our students over the summer. Any of our students, being able to identify quickly who needs the help. So, I'm really excited about this.
That's right. It's a really great service. This assessment team, this is all they do. They serve in this capacity. They really know how to assess our students. And we really feel that we're gonna have excellent data from a qualified team. And it's also gonna help support our teachers, because we're not trying to pile on additional obligations to them from a very full plate that they already have. So, it's a win-win all around for us. If there are no further questions, I recommend the board approve the inter-local cooperation contract services between Bassdrop ISD and the University of Texas Hookem Meadows Center.
I move to approve the inter-local cooperation contract between Bassdrop ISD and the University of Texas Austin Meadows Center as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Mix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Dr. Oliveris. That moves us into our information items, which consist of the board of trustees calendar enrollment and single budget items more than $50,000. And it moves us to the last information item report on the board members continuing education hours. I'd ask that you please have some patience. They did change the law on this. So, I'm gonna read you about two pages that are presented by the superintendent with some verbiage here that we have to announce. So, under the State Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of services based on obligation and expectation of being any sitting board member. As a board president, I'm required to announce the name of each board member who has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the requirement, required continuing education, and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. The requirements of training are measured as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointment, or two-year anniversary of his or her previous training as applicable. There are several training areas of board members continuing education. Number one, local district orientation. Number two, orientation to the state education code. Number three, post and legislative update to the Texas education code. Number four, team building. Number five, additional continuing education. Number six, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. And number seven, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. I will announce the completion and deficiencies as to the required training, as well as any board member training in excess of the continuing education requirement. The following first-year board member has completed the local district orientation training, Rick Rivera. The following first-year board member has time remaining to complete the orientation to the Texas education code and has not yet scheduled this training, Rick Rivera. No board member, no board members were required to complete post-legislative update to the Texas education code training for the time period covered by this announcement. All board members have completed the annual team building training. The following board members have completed the additional continuing education requirements, Molly McClure and Ashley Muechnig. The following first-year board member has time remaining to complete the additional continuing education requirements, Rick Rivera. Kelly Secats has exceeded the requirement, required amount for continuing education training by one additional hour. Billy Moore, our overachiever, has exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by seven additional hours. Congratulations, Billy. Chris Dillon has exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by five additional hours. Dr. Matthew Mix has exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by one additional hour. All board members have completed the... Oh, I'm sorry, biennial training on evaluating students' academic performance and setting goals. All board members have completed the biennial training on identifying and reporting abuse and trafficking. All right. This moves us into our closed session. The board will now convene into closed meeting to discuss the following items posted on our agenda this evening and allowed by the Texas government code 551.074, term and probationary contract for teachers. This time, we'll go into our meeting.